Twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. If you would please stand and join with me the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's like a symphony. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Zachary Urban?
Present.
Rachel Holtein?
Present.
Judy Hutchinson?
Present.
Corey Stites?
Present.
Amanda Weaver?
Here.
Janice Hoppy?
Present.
Leah Dozeman?
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's see, we have no proclamations and ceremonies, and we don't have no minutes in our package. We do have the approval of the agenda next, and with the council's consensus, I would like to remove Consent Agenda Item 1D from the Consent Agenda item to be considered immediately after this approval of the agenda. Any objections? Okay, we're good. We will do that. Any other changes to the agenda? Then the agenda will stay as presented, but now we would like to move to Consent Agenda Item 1D. Ms. Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor Starper. And again, help me with the language. I move to introduce?
No, you just, I would like to introduce.
Okay. This is my first time, so thank you, guys. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 62-2019, a resolution authorizing submittal of the application for a 2020 grant to the State Board of Great Outdoors Colorado for funds to reconstruct the Color Strand Elementary Playground.
And would you read what is at issue on this?
I, yes. Sorry. So, at issue on this, thank you, Leah, so the state, the state of Colorado, Great Outdoors Colorado, School Yard Initiative is a grant program designed to inspire more active physical play and enhance outdoor learning on school grounds. Schools can apply if they partner with an eligible local government. Approval of this resolution supports a grant application for funds to reconstruct the Color Strand Elementary School Playground and authorizes the mayor to sign the contracts if the grant is awarded. As part of the submittal process associated with the grant application, an approved resolution is required by GOCO showing city council support for the requested project.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Our Parks and Rec Director, Karen O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell.
Good evening, council and mayor. I don't have a specific presentation, but more than anything, the children from Color Strand are here to talk. But what I would mention is, this came up, the principal from Color Strand reached out to us and expressed the need for something to be done with their playground, and the school district doesn't currently have funding set aside for that particular project. And so, myself and our Grant and Special Project Administrator, Brandon Altenberg, and our Parks, Forestry and Open Space Manager, Zach Lovato, went over to the school and met with staff, with members of the PTA, and they'd been putting together the grant application and requested our support, as was stated that it's required that the city sponsor their grant application. So, in combination with that, Brandon and I had been looking for a PlayCor and GameTime grant that will help fund playground projects in the city as well. So combining those can help assist Color Strand in renovating their playground, which, also in the council communication was, we believe that the last time that there was money put into this playground was 1999, which is quite a long time ago. So not only is it something that the kids would want, but it's also becoming a safety issue and an ADA issue, so we think that it's very important. And also, from the Parks and Recreation perspective, it's important to have a park within a ten-minute walk from every individual's home, and that's a goal nationwide, and so there isn't another park for those community members within a ten-minute walk. And our community does utilize that playground space after hours, and that's also a requirement of the GOCO application, is that the playground needs to be available to the community when school's not in session, so.
Thank you.
I hope that answers all of the questions.
I think it, I think it does. We may have questions from council, but before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to public comment, and hopefully we have some citizens and residents here who would like to speak on this issue. I'm going to ask Mr. Goff, do you think we could get the microphone off of the podium? I'm not sure we have a step ladder large enough to get everybody up to the podium, but, and how would it be if our, if our guests sort of came to the, came to the middle of the room to?
And they signed up under regular citizen communication, so their names are?
Okay, okay, so they're here.
The first four names.
Very good. So I will, I will call, and since I have the signup sheet, I will call their names, and if they would come forward and give us their name and give us the school to which they attend. Mr. Tim Weaver and Kira Lacy on deck.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and happy Thanksgiving to you. I'd like to thank Karen O'Donnell, Brandon Altenberg, and Allison Scheck, and Zach Lovato for their support in our quest for a new playground at Color Strand Elementary. Collaboration with the city of Wheat Ridge is essential, not only to a new playground, but to the overall success of our school community, both academically and socially. The student leadership at Color Strand has been surveying all grade levels, K through five, and gathering information on a wish list of desires for which a new playground should look like and why we need one. We have three members of our student leadership group here this evening to thank the city for its support and to describe their desire for a new play facility at Color Strand Elementary. The students that are here this evening, we have actually many members, all these young, fine young people you see here are students at Color Strand Elementary. The three individuals who are going to speak this evening are fifth graders in our student leadership group, and they are Kira Lacy, she will speak first, then we have Grayson Schulze, and then Frances Clark.
Thank you very much. Then our next speaker will be Kira Lacy and Grayson Schulze on deck.
Hi, I'm Kira Lacy from Color Strand Elementary, and I'm here to represent my school. I'm a fifth grader from Student Leadership.
It's okay. It's okay, hon.
You're doing great.
That's good.
I'm a fifth grader from Student Leadership, and I'm here to represent my school, and also hopefully convince you to help us get a new playground. Let me take a moment to tell you why we need a new playground. The most obvious thing is how old our playground is. It is almost thirty years old, and when you're eleven years old like me, that's old. It has paint peeling, and it's rusty, and when it rains, it sort of smells funny. This brings me to my next point. At our school, our teacher's priority is our safety, and this playground is not meeting up to their expectations. The sharp edges and the metal splinters, we are way over our banded budget. Just kidding! My next points are more of why we want a new playground, so I can make this part quick. It comes down to our playground is very small, which leads to unused space, which then leads to boredom. It's getting complicated. My point is, we are in need of a new playground. So, these are the reasons why all of us at Color Strand hope that you will choose to grant our request. Get it? Grant our request?
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Our next speaker is Grayson Schulze.
Hi, I'm Grayson. I'm a fifth grader at Color Strand Elementary. I believe that we need a new playground at Color Strand because our playground is over twenty years old, which means it has a lot of rust. If you slide your hand across the metal on our playground, you'd probably get some cuts on your hand, and being a part of Student Leadership, our playground is a safety concern to me. Having a new playground would get rid of old, dangerous equipment and bring a much safer and fun playground for the entire school to enjoy. Thank you for your time and support. Have a wonderful rest of your night.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Frances Clark.
Hi, my name is Frances Clark, and I'm a fifth grader at Color Strand Elementary. I have attended this school since kindergarten. Our playground is old, small, and boring. Also, it's a little dangerous, so I made a little poem to you. My favorite part of every day is when I go outside to play. Sadly, at Color Strand, the playground is old, small, and bland. With a GOCO grant, our playground would be brilliant. It would mean a lot for our community to have a new playground at Color Strand Elementary. Thank you for your time tonight, and thanks for all the support you have given our school.
Thank you very much for coming. We.
(applause)
Well, I would like to thank our residents for, for coming and telling us about this. I will now open it up for questions from council of the, of the staff. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Holtein, will you please give us a motion on Agenda Item 1D?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 62-2019, a resolution authorizing submittal of the application for a 2020 grant to the State Board of Great Outdoors Colorado for funds to reconstruct the Color Strand Elementary Playground.
Second. We have, we have a motion in at least one second. Do I have discussion on council on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
I just would like to say thank you to the young ladies from the Student Leadership for coming and speaking to us, and I know that it can be really nerve-wracking to have a whole room full of adults watching you, but you did a really amazing job, and I appreciate it, and I really look forward to you guys getting your new playground.
Any further discussion before we vote? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I'd like to congratulate the students that got up to speak. You did a great job, and one question I have is maybe for staff as it relates to this particular request, and is there a way that we can include in here a report back upon successful receiving of this grant, or somebody to report back to us?
We'll report back as soon as we hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Well, students, this motion carried, so that we're going to be sending you, I have this paperwork in my file on my desk. I will sign it tonight, and you'll be on your way, and I want to thank you very much for coming and helping us out with this issue, and I wish you a lot of luck with it, so thanks again.[872.43][872.43](applause) Okay. Our next order of business is citizens' right to speak. Any person may speak on any matters other than agenda items for a maximum of three minutes. When, when it's, I've got a signup list, and when I call your name, if you would come to the microphone and adjust the microphone so that we can hear you clearly, give us your name and spell your last name, and give us your address. When that is done, the clerk will turn on the lights, the timing lights that we have. When the, when the, let me get my notes here on the lights, because this is new. The green light will appear when the speaker commences, that light will flash when, when there's thirty seconds remaining, when the yellow light goes on, there's fifteen seconds remaining, and when the red light comes on, your time has elapsed, and if you would please conclude your remarks. So our first speaker is Lucy Molina and Kate Cook on deck.[951.51][951.51](applause) And there's really no, there's no reason for applause in this arena. Thank you.
Where's the timer?
He'll get it on. Give us your name.
Hi, my name is Lucy Molina, and I'm at ninety, ninety-seventy-five West Fiftieth, the World Mission Society Church of God. So, buenas, buenas noches, buenas tardes, good evening. Again, well, I'm actually coming as a citizen, as a neighbor. I don't live here in Wheat Ridge, but I do come to church here, and I would like to, you're wondering, like, where are all these awesome, different colored students, university students that are here? We are here, I'm actually here to introduce them, really. I want to let you know how blessed you are to have these amazing students and this youth here in your city now. I am a member of the World Mission Society Church of God. We testify about the second coming of Christ and the existence of God the Mother in the Bible, and we do so many work, worldwide work, and also locally. In Commerce City, these students have done so many cleanups, anti-bullying campaigns, they had built a really amazing relationship between our council and the church, as well as with the university students, not only in Commerce City, but I also, I am, I represent Adams County as a whole, and we've also got to work with Northland Council, with Aurora City Council, and with Denver. I was listening to the young students. I think we're in luck. These amazing students and the work that the World Mission Society Church of God does is amazing. They have built, even bringing water to little towns in other countries. So I would like to really introduce them and welcome them and offer our services to you in a partnership that, that we might be able to work together. Wheat Ridge bringing a bunch of awesome stuff, like the things that these little kids were asking for. We've, we've painted and cleaned parks, they've done community concerts with me, I used to run a music school. They helped me do so many fundraisers and helped our communities in Aurora, low-income communities, and in Commerce City, which is a low-income community as well. Again, I would like to thank you for this time and for the wonderful work that you do. I had a recent, I just ran for city council in my city, in Commerce City, so I do respect the work that you do, and I thank you again for the, your service to our communities. Again, I would like to introduce to you the ASSEZ, the university students. It's a great diverse group of students that are so willing to help our city. So again, thank you. My name is Lucy Molina, and I hope that we're, I'm able to join them in working with you guys and building an awesome relationship. God bless you.
Thank you very much, and we're, we're happy to have your students in our community, and we look forward to working closely with you. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. God bless you.
Bless you. Our next speaker is Kate Cook and Kristy Davis on deck.
Thank you, mayor and city council. My name is Kate Cook, C-O-O-K-E. I'm with Local Works here in Wheat Ridge. Our office address is forty-two fifty-one Kipling Street. So you don't need my home address, right? I didn't think so. Mayor and council, I'd like to give you just a quick overview and update of what Local Works has been doing lately. We do a TLC, Tender Living Care cleanup program in the Wheat Ridge community. We held four cleanup events this past summer, one in each council district. Through those efforts, we removed fifteen hundred cubic yards of waste. We had eighteen dumpster grants. That's a smaller-scale dumpster program where neighbors can get together, request a dumpster, and remove trash in their neighborhood. We did fourteen block grant parties, so again, connecting those neighbors with neighbors. We just did our fourteenth Live Local event. These events are a lot of fun, that's a real opportunity for residents here in Wheat Ridge to connect with our local businesses. Our last one was held at Ricoli Brewery. We were able to meet with Rick and hear about his passion for brewing beer, and he will be celebrating his seventh year anniversary here in Wheat Ridge on November twenty-ninth. He invites you all to swing by and say hi. As you know, we just did Trunk or Treat. It's a great event. We have a new partnership with Lutheran Medical Center, so we were able to move the event where there's more space and there's more room for the kids. We didn't have them lining up too badly. Kids do tend up to line up, so we had to keep reminding them, there's a lot of room, spread out, but we had about thirty-five hundred participants come, so that's a really, again, a really great way to reach the community. About three-quarters of the trunks were sponsored by local businesses, so again, really looking at connecting our businesses with the residents. We also, as part of our Activate Thirty-eight grant, we held two bicycle education events, one at, I'm going to point, and they're not here anymore, one at Color Strand, Color Strand Elementary School, and one at Everett. We were able to educate a hundred and fifty students on how to safely bike in the community. That's a big issue on Thirty-eighth Avenue. And I think I've got them all in my three minutes. And then, let's see, finally, we want to invite you to the holiday celebration. The mayor will be joining us to do the official tree lighting that will be on December seventh, so Saturday, from three to six-thirty in the evening, and it's a lot of fun. Again, a real opportunity for the businesses and the residents to connect. So we'll have Strolling Santa, Hot Chocolate, Smore Station, Dancing Christmas Tree, all kinds of fun stuff. So, that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much. Sounds like you have a lot of great things planned, so we appreciate you working in our community. Our next speaker is Kristy Davis and Kristin Malton, I believe. I hope I got that right. On deck.
Thank you. Long time no see.[1340.07][1340.07](laughing)
Always a pleasure.
Good evening, oh, Kristy Davis, D-A-V-I-S, address seven-nine-seven-five West Thirty-Ninth, here in Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd first like to thank you and welcome the new elected officials, and thank you for all your hard work during the elections, and wish you all, staff, audience, a happy Thanksgiving. Robin, happy Thanksgiving. And thank you for our, for your commitment to our city. Today, I'd like to address the emails that Ms. Hutchinson sent as a constituent, which peppered my emails over the past years, as well as most of the other city council members. The tone and words in these emails were completely inappropriate, full of name-calling threats, and honestly, inappropriate hateful words. Throughout the entire time, all of these emails were sent anonymously, and when asked for a name, never given. However, the same email was in the candidate notice of intent form, which was J. Hutchins, and I'll leave the rest blank. And even when I would reach out, asking the meat to discuss their, her frustrations, or even a phone call, those invitations were never accepted. I just received more nasty comments. So today, I'm here because that is the difference between you and I. I do not hide behind a keyboard and remain anonymous. I will share my thoughts. I just want to understand what the intent of those emails were. Actually, I don't need an explanation, and I don't understand the motivation. They were just hateful and really no request for improvements or productive conversations. They were comments about our discussions at city councils, which includes name-calling and threats of making sure I was not re-elected, and sorry, I was re-elected, and the comments about my term limits. I wish I would have saved those emails, because I would have loved to read them verbatim. Also, comments about our lost goats in our city that many of our members mourned, and how you had said they're probably in someone's freezer. Who would say that, and why? I mean, it's just seething with hate. So today, this is my wish for you, Ms. Hutchinson, and also the rest of the council. I wish that you never have to be the recipient of that type of email. They really play no productive purpose. Honestly, as many of you have experienced, you will get emails or voicemails from frustrated and angry constituents, or have those discussions with your neighbors on the sidewalks and in their driveways. That's okay, as I know you'll get them, and most folks are angry, even when angry, are reasonable and want their voices heard. Ms. Hutchinson, I met, may I ask of you, as I've not seen the prior communications, and also what our neighbors and constituents deserve, now I have to go faster because I'm almost out of time, is a modicum of decorum. You will not always agree with your fellow council members or members of our community, but they deserve the respect to have open conversations. In the end, we are all neighbors and human beings, and deserve better than the emails you have sent in the past. As a fifth-generation Wheat Ridge native, my voice is important, just as important as our new homeowners in our towns, and new renters, perhaps in their first apartment. We all come with different filters and influences in our lives, and each and every one of us deserve equal respect. In watching new council being sworn in, that was one of the items in the oath. Also, as a previous council member, and to those-
Order, can you wrap it up?
Yep, 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 past, present, future, trying to do the best for our communities. No one is infallible. We are human, and I know in your hearts and brains, you're doing the best you can, so I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Martin and Beza Guirma on deck.
Hello. My name is Kristin Martin, and I am the representative for ASSEZ WOW, which stands for Save the Earth from A to Z, We Are One. We are a group that is a part of the World Mission Society Church of God. It is a Christian non-denominational church that is worldwide, that was established by second coming Christ, Anseong Hong, as well as, we believe in the existence of God the Mother. And the, the ASSEZ WOW is a global volunteer group that consists of the Church of God Young Adult Workers from over seven thousand five hundred churches in one hundred and seventy-five countries. ASSEZ WOW gives love to all humankind following the teachings of God, love your neighbors as yourself. We have partnered with the United Nations to achieve the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals to combat climate change and give hope for a bright future for the generations to come after us. So we have been active in the Wheat, in Wheat Ridge through community visits. We just recently visited the elderly at the Brookdale Senior Living Center. We also do have participated in charitable concerts for disaster relief globally and locally, and we also have done environmental cleanups in our region, such as at parks and in neighborhoods, as well as we are participating in a campaign called Mother's Street. So our whole purpose in doing these good deeds is to have the heart of a mother who always unconditionally cares for her community and also gives hope for a bright future. So we really would like to make this introduction to you so that we can also work together, because we know that it is your duty to also take care of the community of Wheat Ridge, and so we just would really like to ask the youth to work with you for a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beza Guirma.
Hi, thank you. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Beza Guirma. I'm a university student from Metropolitan State University in Denver, and I'm currently studying computer science. So first and foremost, like I said, we'd really like to thank you for giving us a chance to come and speak today. I represent ASSEZ. ASSEZ also stands for Save the Earth from A to Z. So the mission of our organization is to promote volunteerism among the youth on university campuses. So real quick, I would like to ask the councilmen and councilwoman this question, what age group or what generation do you think volunteers the most?
Singers.
Sorry?
Singers.
Singers? Oh, seniors, sorry.[1757.13][1757.13](laughing) I was like, singers? Yes, so CNN actually conducted a survey, and they found that Generation X is the one that volunteers the most. But as the time is progressing, and as more millennials and more Generation Z are being more conscious of what's happening to our planet, we believe that as the youth, we need to stand up and set an example of volunteering. So our organization, just recently, we hosted an environmental forum where the president of our schools attended, the mayor- that, as the youth, we need to stand up and set an example of volunteering. So our organization, just recently, we hosted an environmental forum, where the president of our schools attended. The mayor also gave us an address, where we explained about plastic pollution and environmental pollution. And we also are partners of the United Nations. So in partnership with the United Nations, we're working on implementing the 17 Sustainable Development Goals. So we've had the opportunity to speak at the UN twice. Once last year, and this year as well, at Salt Lake City, and we had the chance to explain what we're doing in our campuses in order to promote a greener environment. So we really thank you for giving us this opportunity to come and speak, because all of our motives come from having the heart and mind of a mother. Because a mom's heart is always to look after her offspring, and make sure that, you know, they grow up to be healthy, and they grow up to be well. So with that same kind of mindset and attitude, we want to help our community in Wheat Ridge, not just in our campus, in order to implement the 17 Sustainable Development Goals, and in order to push for a brighter future. So once again, we'd really like to thank you for giving us a chance to come and to speak, and introduce ourselves to you all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone who has not signed up who would like to speak under public comment at this time? Okay, we will close our public comment, and move now to our consent agenda. Ms. Hulteen, will you please introduce the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Starker. I'd like to introduce the following consent agenda items. Motion to, or, I'm sorry, Consent Agenda Item A, motion to adopt the 2020 City Council meeting calendar. Consent Agenda Item B, motion to approve monthly payments to Kaiser Permanente for January through December 2020. Membership billing not to exceed a total of $2,444,535. Consent Agenda C, Resolution Number 612019, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $20,000 for city attorney fees.
Thank you. May I have a motion on Agenda Items Number 1, A, B, and C?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, A, B, and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 2. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number 2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda Item Number 2, Council Bill Number 18-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 2-30, 2-31, and 2-32 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the duties of the Chief of Police, Public Works Director, and the Community Development Director, and authorizing changes to the city's organizational chart.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. Can I confirm with the deputy clerk that the ordinance number is 1677 on this one?
It is confirmed, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
I do. That would be me this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
As many of you know, we've had a vacancy in our Public Works Director position, almost exactly 11 months right now, this month. So we've conducted three separate recruitment processes over the last year, but we're unable to find an exceptional leader that I was looking for to fill that role. Engineering positions today are, in general, are very difficult to fill these days. As an example, Arvada recently replaced their Public Works Director with their former police chief. So it seems to be going well for them. During the last 11 months, though, while we were attempting to fill this role, duties have been shared, among others, in the organization, which provided me with the ability to reevaluate how various functions when the Public Works Department are organized. What I've determined over that time is that the city's engineering functions are really best managed under the same direction and leadership as of the Community Development Department. Other cities across the country and in the metro area, including Westminster and Roomfield, are also organized under this model. My hope is that this organizational change will improve internal and external communication, enhance collaboration between our planning, building, and engineering employees, and streamline the process for our external stakeholders. Although the Code of Laws grants the city manager's authority to exercise supervision and control over all departments, the city charter requires that any consolidation or merger of city departments be approved by city council by ordinance. So that's why that's in front of us this evening. With this change, the only change would be, again, the engineering function would move under the leadership and direction of the Community Development Director. The Public Works Department would still provide all of the oversight of the city's operations, including maintenance of our city streets, storm sewer, traffic signals and signs, maintenance of the city's automotive fleet, provide snow removal, unfortunately, probably a lot tonight, and ice control, manage construction on public and, in some cases, private property. And our current operations manager in Public Works is Greg Knudson. He's been with the city for over 20 years, and 12 years in the position of operations manager. He would fill that role as Public Works Director to oversee those functions of the city. So with that, I'm here for any questions you may have. Ken Johnstone, and I believe Greg is Greg, and Greg's here too. Greg Knudson's here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open up to public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you would like to speak on this issue, you may do so at this time. I don't see anyone, so I will open it up to questions from council. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question maybe Patrick or Jerry, but I'm not sure. As it relates to the city code and the ordinances, one example I can find is within flood control, that the Public Works Director is designated over that particular area as far as issuing permits and that kind of thing. So where there's other areas within the code, that the Public Works Director is tasked with doing something or another, and now we've assigned that duty to the Community Development Director, how do we handle that, or how is that filtered out?
Well, the ordinance as drafted, I think you make a good point, doesn't find all the references throughout the code to Public Works and Community Development. What we can do, one of two things. We could add to the ordinance a directive, as is commonly done, where you have a situation like this, where it affects a bunch of references, to direct that the, what's he, on first reading?
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that we do have an ordinance scheduled on first reading for January 13th to address those other references.
Oh, we do? Okay. Then that'd be the door that we should go through.
Yeah. There's too many others to address in this one ordinance. We wanted to get this piece done, but our public, I think our staff in Community Development Department, Lauren McElack, went through the whole code and found all those references that we'll bring back in a separate ordinance.
Okay. Additional discussion, questions from council? Rachel, Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just, I'm curious, sorry, I'm wearing my bifocals tonight and they're a little smudged, so I'm having a hard time reading here. I am just curious about how this reorganization, like, impacts the operations in terms of engineering, working with community planning. I know there was a lot of things just kind of outlined, but I'm just wondering, is this just, will we notice any difference from the outside, or will this, is this just really a managerial reorganization?
Just a managerial. Again, I'm hoping that on the outside, they'll notice a better customer service and better collaboration with, through development review of all of our projects. You know, even today, we work so closely together with, between Public Works and Community Development, but under two different management structures, and I think that's one gap that I've found since I've been here, that those functions are so aligned that they really need to be under the direction and management of the same person. So that's the only really change that you'll see is internally.
Thank you. And then I have a second question. There's a reference of a now-available full-time position, and I just want to confirm, will that full-time position be within community planning or within Public Works?
So correct. Thank you for bringing that up. So Greg Knudson's current position, the operations manager position, will go away as he moves into the Public Works Director position. We're going to evaluate where any gaps may exist. We want to try this out first, and then not rush to judgment, and see where the most priority gap is, and then fill that position in that gap. So it could be in either department. We don't know quite yet. We have some priorities. Staff has been evaluating that, and actually, we've been talking about this consolidation and merger for quite some time, and we have two staff committees that have been meeting to talk about all the different, not challenges necessarily, but the implementation steps to make this happen, and make it happen correctly and right, and also to look for other opportunities where we can streamline processes and do things better. So they are looking at that issue of where, kind of where that priority gap lies to begin with, and then that position would probably go in to fill that gap.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, is there any other questions of staff? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and a, let's see, Ms. Hoppe, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 18-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 2-30, 2-31, and 2-32 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the duties of the Chief of Police, Public Works Director, and Community Development Director, and authorizing changes to the city's organizational chart on second reading, and that it take effect immediately after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 3. Mr. Urban, would you introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2019, an ordinance adopting by reference 2018 additions of the International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Residential Code, International Fire Code, International Existing Building Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, the 2017 addition of the National Electrical Code, the 2018 National Fire Protection Association standard for healthcare facilities, the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, the adoption of certain amendments to such codes, providing penalties for the violation of the same, and amendments amending Chapter 5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws accordingly.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. May I have a motion, please?
I'm catching my breath. I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2019, ordinance adopting by reference 2018 additions of the International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Residential Code, International Fire Code, International Existing Building Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, 2017 addition of National Electrical Code, the 2018 National Fire Protection Association standard for healthcare facilities, the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, adopting certain amendments to such codes, providing penalties for the violation of the same, amending Chapter 5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws accordingly on first reading. Order published. Public hearing set from Monday, January 13, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect July 1, 2020, with the exception of Appendix F and Appendix T of the 2018 International Residential in Section 306.2 of the International, 2018 International Building Code, which shall take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Weaver. Will the clerk please poll the council? Did you get it?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Put this thing back, or push it. Let's push it over like that, so you can see. Oops. You can see your button. Okay. Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 4. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number 4?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 202019, an ordinance approving conveyance of real property to the city of Arvada, and in connection therewith approving termination of an easement agreement and conveyance of real property to the city. And then, this is the Mountain Gateway Project in the city of Arvada on the west side of Robb Street, requires additional right-of-way to construct Robb Street. The city of Arvada is also requesting that easements rights be extinguished. In addition, the Mountain Gateway Project will be dedicating property to the city in order to expand the Ridge Road Regional Pond to provide the required storm water detention.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading. May I please have a motion?
Let me scroll down to it. I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2019, an ordinance approving conveyance of real property to the city of Arvada, and in connection therewith approving termination of an easement agreement and conveyance of real property to the city. On first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, December 9, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Oh, wait a minute. I'm being corrected. Is it Ms. Dozeman? Okay, we'll let Ms. Dozeman have the second on that. This is an ordinance on first reading. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 5. Mr. Stites, would you introduce this item?
Sir. Council Bill Number 21-2019, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning contributions to the police pension fund. At issue, the 2020 budget authorized the City Council on, or by, the City Council on October 14, 2019, appropriates funds to increase the city's contribution to sworn employees' pension by 0.5%. The total contribution, for a total contribution of 10.5%, as the current contributions, 10% is specified in the city's code, along with the equal match by employees. A code amendment is necessary to operationalize council's intent.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time in place for the public hearing. A motion is in order. Would you please provide me motion, Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 21-19, an ordinance amending Section 19-53 and 19-54 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the police pension fund. On first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, December 9, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, and it to take effect 15 days after publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. This is an ordinance on first reading. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 6. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 59-2019, a resolution initiating annexation proceedings, finding a petition for annexation of land located in Section 17 Township 3 South, Range 69 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, to be in substantial compliance with Section 31-12-107, parentheses 1. Colorado revised statutes and setting a public hearing date to consider the annexation case number Annex-1901.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mr. Dahl, give a quick staff presentation.
Thank you, Council. You have seen this issue presented to you, I think, a couple of times. The new council members, not as often. But this involves the annexation of a portion of 52nd Avenue, starting Award Road and then going east, that's presently in, unincorporated, Jefferson County, and Jefferson County is also, of course, the owner of that right-of-way. And for various reasons, as described in our quest for council action, Jefferson County has desired that the city annexes a road. It will then become a city street. It'll become the maintenance obligation of the city when the city does that. You'll notice on the second page of the staff report, it describes the financial impact, obviously, when a city takes over a road and needs to maintain it, that is a cost. It also is noted here that Jefferson County is going to credit the city with $50,000 approximately in funds been reserved for maintenance of improvements in this sector. I see that Mr. Tulio, the county treasurer, is here and has signed up, agreed to speak, and may want to address that. But from just a good planning and maintenance and control standpoint, the staff has, for some time, recommended that this annexation take place. And, of course, the city wouldn't be able to do the maintenance, et cetera, unless it were a city street in the city. And the way in which to do that is to annex this property. That brings us to the procedures under the annexation statutes, which is not something that council sees very often, because the city does not- that council sees very often because the city does not annex often. But to annex property unless it's property the city owns, it's required that you receive a petition from the property owner saying that they are the owner of more than 50 percent of the property and 50 percent of the owners petitioning you to annex to the city. In this case, the petitioner owns 100 percent of the property because the petitioner is Jefferson County and they've signed an annexation petition. Once you receive that, it's laid against the statutory requirements, the key one of which is that there must be a coneguity with the property being annexed and this present city boundaries, meaning the property being annexed needs to touch the city to the extent of at least one-sixth of the perimeter of the property being annexed. Here, there's much more than that coneguity so that the requirement is satisfied. Procedurally, annexation is more complex than other procedures. And this begins the procedure. This is a resolution initiating the process and finding that there's substantial compliance of the petition with these requirements of law, that there be a coneguity and there be a community interest, et cetera. That merely starts the process and it sets a public hearing date. And that triggers a, four publications once weekly of that public hearing date. So that won't happen until January, I think, 13th is the date set for that. Meanwhile, the hearing will get published four times. Meanwhile, you'll see an ordinance annexing the property because you, an ordinance is the only way to annex property. The resolution initiates the process. But then an ordinance is required to actually change a city boundary and that is what will happen here. And our process, of course, is two readings of an ordinance. So the second reading, you'll meanwhile see that ordinance on first reading in a meeting or two. But a second reading will happen on the 13th. At that meeting, you'll also have to pass another resolution finding that, well, it was in substantial compliance as of November 25, but tonight, January the 13th, we've determined that it really is in compliance and we're going to proceed with annexing. So it's a little bit of a complicated process. As well, you will see zoning ordinance coming into the process that will hit second reading on the same night so we can do it all at the same night and we have to kind of coordinate this schedule. And it's required that the city have zoned property within 90 days of annexing it. Here, it's less intense because this is going to be property maintained by the city. You're a little less concerned about activities taking place on the property in an unpermitted way because you're going to be the property owner. But nevertheless, it's important that we zone the property and bring it within the city's zoning ordinance. So that's an outline of the process. We'll see more as it unfolds, but I wanted to give you the whole scheme concluding on January the 13th with a number of actions.
Thank you. I have, want to go to public comment now. I have one person signed up to speak. Looks like Jerry DiTulio. Mr. DiTulio?
Thank you. Jerry DiTulio, Jefferson County Treasurer, 100 Jefferson County Parkway. So today during a staff meeting with department heads and elected officials, this came up through the annexation as a budget concern for the county. So, and plus, the county knows that there's new elected officials in Wheat Ridge and we wanted to make sure that somebody came tonight to kind of give you a heads up on where this is going and look for support. Obviously, the public hearing is January 13th, but if you had any questions, we didn't want to see it derailed this soon or this, tonight. So the county manager and the public works director, they're a little bit busy with some other things tonight outside with the snow, but they asked if I could just kind of swing by the council meeting and make any, make some comments about the project and how it benefits Wheat Ridge, how it benefits the Jefferson County because they'll be coming off of our expense rolls to maintain this road. And in fact, this is one of the lowest priorities of the county where you will be seeing any construction or work on this section of the road for quite a long time. So I'll just go ahead and read this quick statement so that if you have any questions, you can ask me. "The portion of 52nd Avenue between Ward Road and Tabor Street that currently is in the jurisdiction of Jefferson County creates a hodgepodge of ownership and control over the road that creates unnecessary delay and cost for improvements in the area of Wheat Ridge with tremendous potential for urban growth. Further, Wheat Ridge stands to gain leverage over development projects which may occur north of 52nd Avenue. With this annexation, the city will be able to more effectively coordinate the submission of federal and/or state grants impacting the right-of-way. Full control of the right-of-way will facilitate effective planning, organizing, supervising and performance of professional engineering for the roadway, traffic signals, sidewalks, drainage, and other structures deemed necessary and beneficial to Wheat Ridge residents." And as the city attorney mentioned, I think $50,000 was negotiated for money back from the county. That's not obviously enough to fix the road, but it does kick off the process and it's a way to get this cleared up so that it's not in three jurisdictions, Arvada, Wheat Ridge, and Jefferson County. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio.
Thank you.
That's, Mr. DiTulio is the only speaker that I had signed up on this. I wanted to open it up. Is there anyone else that's here that hasn't signed up and would like to speak on this? You may do so now. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll close the public comment and we will go to council for questions of staff on this item. Do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the contract for $23,000, is, wait, is that the number we're on? I'm sorry. That's the next one. Okay, relating to that. Sorry, wrong question.
That's okay. Any other questions? I had a question for Mr. Goff. When I look at the, at the survey plan prepared, I guess, by Jefferson County, we've got two parcels on here, parcel one and parcel two. What, what happens to the land between parcel one and parcel two?
You want it?
For the, for the, for the right price, I suppose.
Mr. Westburg could speak to that.
I will recognize Mr. Westburg for a brief, a brief discussion on this one then.
Mark Westburg, Public Works Department, City Wheat Ridge. That piece there at Vivian Street is actually in Arvada's jurisdiction, as is there's a little piece of ground over at Tabor Street that's in Arvada's jurisdiction on the north side of the road. The remainder was all in Jefferson County. To keep things simple, we're only annexing the parts of the right-of-way on the north side that are in Jefferson County. So there's two little pieces there that are, that are in Arvada's jurisdiction, not ours.
Okay. And so the piece between parcel one and parcel two and then the piece that looks like east of parcel two?
East of parcel two.
Okay.
Yep.
And so our, our city boundary will jog a few more, a few more times at that location?
Yeah, we're introducing a couple more jogs in our already psychotic city boundary.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to keep record of those and we may, we may be able to submit for those in a contest sometime. So thank you, Mr. Westburg, for that, for that explanation. Is there any further questions before we, I ask for a motion? Okay, I don't see any, so I will go to Ms. Dozeman for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 59-2019, finding the proposed annexation to be in substantial compliance with CRS 31-12-107, print N1, and to be eligible for annexation and setting a first reading date of December 9, 2019 for consideration of an annexation ordinance and second reading and public hearing date of January 13, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there any, actually, this is a motion for first hearing, first reading, right? No, this is a resolution. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council? Pardon me. It's okay. It should...
Motion carries eight to zero.
He's got a switch there that when you push the button, when everybody's, and he'll hit the switch and they all, it all votes at one time. Okay, thank you so much. We will go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce an agenda item number seven?
It's Resolution number 63-2019, a resolution approving the sex offender tracking and registration system, SOTAR, intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
That's, that's me this evening. I let my police department go home in the snow so they could get home. This, this is a fairly simple, an agreement with Douglas County so that the city of Wheat Ridge Police Department can share sex offender registration information with Douglas County. They provided this system a few years back and it was free. They are now asking us to contribute a little bit to this service. So our financial impact is $2,000 a year to access the system. So because of that, we need an official IGA with them. So that's what this is.
Thank you. I don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this at this time? You may come forward. Seeing none, I will go to council for questions of staff. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, I don't see any, so I will ask, Ms. Hutchinson, may I please have a motion on agenda item number seven?
I move to approve Resolution number 63-2019, a resolution approving the sex offender tracking and registration system, SOTAR, intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number eight. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce agenda item number eight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Incorporated of Denver, Colorado in the amount not to exceed $23,692 for professional services for easement acquisition services for 52nd Avenue, Ward Road Intersection Improvements. The issue is that the improvements at the intersection of 52nd Avenue and Ward Road are being done in cooperation with the Colorado Department of Transportation. These improvements require that easements be acquired at three corners of the intersection. HDR Incorporated has been contracted to perform property acquisition services for the city of Wheat Ridge. Does that need to be corrected? It says "the Wheat Ridge."
Well, it's the Wheat Ridge Ward Road Station.
Oh, the Wheat Ridge, okay, thank you. The Wheat Ridge Ward Station Planning Area. An addition task order needs to be approved to acquire easements for these improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have any, a presentation on this?
I don't, I think Councilmember Weaver read the gist of the issue, but Mark Westburg here is to answer any questions. I think Mr. Urban may have a question for...
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on agenda item number eight. If there's anyone here who would like to speak, you may do so now. I don't see anyone, so I will open this up for questions of council for staff. Are there any questions of Mr. Goff or Mr. Westburg, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to this particular task order, is this within the context of the intersection at 52nd and Ward so that the two E funds are able to be spent on this? Is that...
Yes, correct.
And then the $50,000 that we receive from the county relative to the acquisition of 52nd Avenue, does that intersect with this and can that be used for this intersection or is it only for the maintenance and...
Yeah, I don't think they're putting any specific specs on the money they're going to give us, so yeah, I think we could supplement any of the expenses in the, in the Wheat Ridge Ward station area with that $50,000, which it could go towards this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for staff? Seeing none, will a clerk, wait a minute, I guess we better go for a motion. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Incorporated of Denver, Colorado in an amount not to exceed $23,692 for property acquisition services for the Ridge Road, Ward Road Intersection Improvement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda number nine. Agenda number nine is the motion to elect the mayor pro tem. At issue, each year, city council members elect by a majority vote a mayor pro tem who serves until their successor is elected. The election is conducted according to Section Romanu Rule 3, Print B of the City Council Rules of Order, Rules of Order and Procedure as follows. B, Mayor Pro Tem, 1. At the first or second regular meeting in November of each year, the council shall elect a mayor pro tem who shall serve until their successor is elected. The proceed, the procedure shall be as follows. A, the chair will announce that the floor is open for nominations for the position of mayor pro tem. B, nominations will be taken from city council members by voice vote, by voice, no second is necessary. C, each nominee will have the opportunity to address the council. D, a motion and second is then in order to elect one of the nominees to the position of mayor pro tem. If the motion is not carried, additional motions are in order until a mayor pro tem is elected by a majority of council present. So I will announce that nominations are open for the position of mayor pro tem. Ms. Weaver?
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Hoppy.
Thank you. Are there additional nominations? I don't see any, so I will close the nominations. Would Ms. Hoppy like to make any statement?
I appreciate everybody's confidence of being the mayor pro tem this past year. There were a few things with our scheduling that I put into place so that things like our budgeting timeline and our budgeting schedules, when we were looking at all the additional things that go into our budget, were not kind of just thrown onto one meeting for us. And so I think that we had a very successful budget season that way. And I think that moving forward with, we have our, we have our retreat coming up and moving forward with our retreat and just the planning that's been, that goes on along with that and the continuance of being able to continue to serve you as your mayor pro tem. I really appreciate the offer.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? A motion, a motion to elect...
Mr. Mayor, oh, is it a motion? I, I move to elect, thank you. I move to elect Councilwoman Hoppy as mayor pro tem.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hulteen.
I have to finish my motion.
Oh, it's not, okay, I'm sorry. Well, go ahead.
Effective immediately, term to expire upon election of this, of their successor.
Thank you. Now we have a second by Ms. Hulteen and I would take discussion on the motion. Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much and congratulations to Ms. Hoppy for being reelected to the position of mayor pro tem. That concludes our business agenda for tonight. I would like to go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have seen the email I sent out earlier this afternoon, but we are opening late city facilities tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at this point. That does include the Active Adult Center and the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center, so, and we will reevaluate in the morning about 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. to see if there's even more snow than they predicted, to see if we need to change anything, but, and then happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you so much. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will go to elected officials' matters and I'll start with Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem, Hoppy, and also thank Councilwoman Hoppy and all of the staff that showed up earlier this week and gave all of us new city council members an education on how this works. It helped us really walk into this first meeting knowing what we were, what we were doing. Although I could relate with some of the young students who are here tonight, who were really nervous to get up here. And so I also just wanted to thank them for showing up and for their parents for showing up and helping them participate in the community. It was a great way to kick off the meeting and good luck to them with their GoCo grant. And then also just good luck to everybody that's out there clearing the streets tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
I would just like to say happy Thanksgiving for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say on this week of Thanksgiving that I am really thankful to all of those that work really hard in our community, whether it be city staff, city and elected officials, those working in our service organizations and all throughout our city. I just, it takes a village to really make this go around and I'm really thankful for all of you and I look forward to continuing working with you and I'm really excited for our retreat. So happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and thank everybody for coming out to speak in the public comment. and thank everybody for coming out to speak in the public comment. I appreciate that. And just want to make sure everybody has a safe drive home and safe tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two quick things. On Saturday night, I was at Saint James Episcopal Church for the ordination of their priest. And it's just exciting to see churches that are really taking root in the community. And I'm especially excited because Saint James is stepping up to take an active role in addressing homelessness. I know part of our Navigator Program's success really depends on successful partnerships with our community organizations. So I'm looking forward to working with Saint James on that. I know they're trying to coordinate with some of the other churches to make sure we're addressing the needs of everyone in our community. And then, secondly, I'd like to invite everybody, it's a little bit of a conflict with the holiday ceremony, but on December seventh, there's a book launch for my friend Betty Pate. Betty Pate is almost ninety years old, and she and her husband Harold met at Fruitdale Elementary School. And they grew up in Wheat Ridge and have a really long, rich history. And so she has her memoir, and it's December seventh at the Maple Grove Grange at thirty-one thirty Youngfield Street from three to four thirty. And she, she has an extraordinary history, and most of it is here in our city. And I think anyone who finds Wheat Ridge as enticing as I do will enjoy her story. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
That does sound very interesting. Ms. Weaver?
Just want to wish everybody a happy, safe holiday.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see if I can get an item put on a future study session. Councilwoman Nosler Beck and I talked about it, also Councilwoman Hulteen and I, looking into the community planning and notification process and procedures as far as when somebody comes up for a rezoning or specifically, I know flag lots right now is an administrative process as far as that goes. But when, when somebody comes up looking at the notification processes, procedures, are we sending postcards out, you know, what, what all that looks like?
All right, Ms. Hoppe, I'm sure has that on her notes to get into the calendar. Thank you very much, and I will turn to Ms. Hoppe for Elected Officials Matters.
Thank you. One of the things that I was going to ask to put onto a study session was looking at neighborhood meetings being closer to when they go to planning, to the planning meeting. And so maybe if Mr. Stites is open to this, I feel like this kind of goes into conjunction. And so if we could maybe discuss that at the same time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great. And then I just wanted to say a couple of reminders. So Ricoli's seventh year anniversary, November twenty-eighth. The holiday party on Thirty-Eighth Avenue from three to six on December seventh. And I just want to say thank you again to Kira, Grace Lynn, and Frances, and for all the Color Strand students. It really, it's really awesome to hear the Pledge of Allegiance with the full room, but when you have elementary voices in there, it makes it super special and joyful. And I hope everybody has a super Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Those additional voices add the stereo that's we need in our lives. So I would like to, to thank our visitors from Color Strand for bringing this issue forward so that we could discuss it tonight and for joining us in City Council. I want to welcome all of the visitors that have come to sit through our council meeting and see how we conduct our business in the city. We, we welcome you in our city and look forward to having you join our, the wonderful things we have going on here. I had the, the pleasure of joining the Metro Mayor's Caucus all day on Saturday at a construction for Habitat for Humanity House in Denver, Colorado. And we had the mayors, you know, Mr. Hancock was there in the morning, and the mayors from all over around the metro area, our mayor from Arvada was there. We had, we had a wonderful time. The homeowners were there building, building the home with us. It was, it was muddy like I don't remember construction sites being, but, but a real joy to be there. And, and at lunch, you know, my comment was, was that this was really a great Thanksgiving gift for me to see how we can give back in our community. I know, I know that you all do. I know that we have hundreds of citizens in Wheat Ridge that give back to their community. And that, that really gives my heart a lot of, a lot of joy. And I want to pass that on to everyone for a great Thanksgiving. So if there's no further business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.